I can call our meeting back for next time on the agenda. Under item eleven, under old business, item A, low performing plan revisions, appendix H, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. In November, I shared the information with you from our schools that have been designated by the state as low performing. We submitted those plans to the state, they provided us with some feedback, and these are those revised plans, and I would ask for your approval.
Move for approval?
Second. Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved, thank you. Item B, CTE High School proposal, appendix A, Dr. Smith.
Yes, in December, we presented information to you regarding the Career and Technical High School proposal. This is a regional school that we're working, that we're planning to work collaboratively with Cape Fear Community College and other districts to bring to New Hanover and to bring to our students. And so what we're seeking is your approval of the proposal, so we're not requesting any funding, but just the approval of the proposal that was presented last month.
If you approve it tonight, then we'll ask to make a similar proposal to the county commissioners.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed leading employment needs of Wilmington and surrounding areas, you know, public safety. I mean, the fact is, none of these students will be qualified to go into public safety other than maybe a security guard. You have to be twenty-one to do BLET. I'm just want to be clear that nobody gets misled that if you finish this up, that you could go. But in any event.
Yes. So part of the plan moving forward, if there's support with our board as well as the county commissioners, will be to look at those curriculums that would be most appropriate for our students, and also those opportunities. And the community college already works very closely with different advisory groups as to those fields that are most relevant, most needed within the community, and this is a work that will evolve. So we will definitely continue to have those conversations, but as we move forward again with the curriculum development, we'll make sure that the courses are appropriate for our students and also reflective of the needs of the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, item C. Legion Stadium Sound System and Scoreboard, wanted to bring that to the board's attention again. I know we discussed it sometime back. Attached, you should have the email from Amy Beatty, who is the City Parks Director, that's over Legion Stadium, and it shows the minutes from the last meeting of the Legion Stadium Commission, of which Mrs. Nichols and I sat on that committee. And they've been trying, and it's long, long overdue, to replace the sound system and the scoreboard at Legion Stadium. And if you've ever attended a function there, you can hear something being said.
But you haven't heard what it is.
There's no way in the world you can understand what's being said. It is just terrible. And I recommended some years ago, when the artificial turf was put down, that it should have been replaced then. But this is a joint venture between the school system, the county, and the city of Wilmington. We have an interlocal agreement with them on use of the stadium. This is, as you, everyone knows, the home field of New Hanover High School, their football teams, baseball teams, et cetera. So what they're asking, I know in the past, we discussed at one of our meetings, then the cost to be shared among the entities, was a three-way split between the school system, the city, and the county. That our third was going to be twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, as Mr. Hans has admitted, two things go up. So now, it's the total cost estimate in here is a hundred and fifteen thousand. And there's a business man, David Ward, is contributing five thousand, and the Hammerheads, anyway, the price is down to a hundred. So what they're asking us to do, at the last meeting, the city approved it, and the county commissioners approved it. So now, they're wanting us to approve the third that we would pay, which would be thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. And this would replace the sound system and the scoreboard at Legion Stadium. And also, I know we talked before about this, would provide us an opportunity to recoup an investment, if you wanted to look at it like that, in that advertising can be sold and shown on the scoreboard where we could recoup, I say we, the board could. And then it could be a, some revenue for New Hanover for an athletic program. So it's on tonight to vote on, so I'd be, any questions you might have, Ms. Nichols, and I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Have they actually chosen somebody to do the scoreboard, to do the replacement?
I really don't know. I know that when the artificial turf was put down, they had a company there, and I don't remember the name of the company, that if you're familiar with Legion Stadium, you know where the press box is up top. We were all up there. They took a big sound system down there to where the current scoreboard is now. We all left and left the stadium and went outside over there, and they cranked it up, and you could hear every syllable that was uttered. They played music, so I think that's the company, but I don't remember the name of the company. I'm sure Amy could provide that, but.
Move for approval?
Seven.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Hayes, before you vote, if I may, if you recall, last April and May, we actually had an interlocal agreement that was presented to the board because of this request, and the board approved it at that time. However, they, the city didn't agree to the length of time that we wanted them to agree to maintain the scoreboard. And we had proposed fifteen years, and that was the board's agreement, and then we went back to the city, and they wanted to reduce it to three years. So I don't think we have a.
I mean, as far as maintenance on the.
On the scoreboard, yeah. The board's thinking was that if the board was going to contribute a substantial amount to the purchase of it, then the city ought to agree to maintain it for a significant period of time.
Well, I talked with Amy Beatty this week, who is the director, and her understanding is just like the understanding we would have, is that when this is done, the city takes ownership, because it's their scoreboard. And that, because I think, you know, you and I had talked, and said, okay, what happens a week later? If lightning hits this board and it is destroyed, well, that's their responsibility. And she said that, that they would take responsibility for maintaining the, you know, once we do this, then that's their responsibility. And their insurance is what we talked about.
But do we have that in, do we have that in writing in an agreement, is what I'm concerned about?
I put it in, in the proposed agreement, and the city's legal department sent it back and changed it to say the agreement was only for three years, which would mean they'd have no obligation to maintain it after three years, and we could not collect the revenue from the signs after three years. So I don't think we actually have an agreement with the city on those issues. We, you can agree on the amount, but those issues still need to be worked out.
Well, why don't we go ahead, pause, in talking with her.
Well, I'm concerned about this thing. I mean, I thought the understanding was that Hanover would be able, once we had, the school board had recouped their money.
Right.
That Hanover would be able to then sell advertising and get the benefits from that. But what I'm hearing is that there's a possibility that once three years has elapsed, the city's just going to do like, I mean, they're going to take everything.
But that's not what, you know, we said to her, but you're right. We could approve this contingent upon what I have just said, which is what she told me. That once it's put there, they're responsible for it, and anytime there's an activity taking place there, it's a New Hanover High School activity, then the proceeds from that activity go to New Hanover High School, period.
Can we also make it conditional upon the fact that we are permitted to receive proceeds from it past three years?
No, I would, but just indefinitely, I mean, as long as, if it's a.
Okay.
I would just phrase it that anytime there's an activity there that is a New Hanover High School activity, then it's understood. Just like if the Hammerheads are playing, or some other group, then, you know, we're not concerned with that. But if it's a New Hanover High School activity, then yes.
Why don't we, why don't we amend the motion that we are, we will contribute thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
I don't think we've got a motion yet.
I thought you'd made a motion.
No, I thought.
Yeah, there was a motion in a second.
Sorry.
That we will contribute three hundred and thirty-three, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars contingent on the city and county and the New Hanover County school system being able to work out a suitable contract.
But wasn't that our original agreement? Wasn't that our original discussion where we had, we had approved up to twenty-five thousand dollars contingent upon these requirements, and what Wayne is saying apparently, and correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, is that they haven't agreed to that?
That's correct. My notes reflect that you actually approved twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, not twenty-five thousand, but otherwise, yes, that's correct.
So do we have an agreement with the city at all?
No, at this point, no.
Have we paid them anything yet?
No.
Okay, then I suggest we proceed with the motion with those as stipulations. I second your amendment, Ed.
So the amended motion would be that the thirty-three, three thirty-three.
Contingent.
Contingent upon the city, I guess you phrase this legally, Wayne, that the city's responsible for maintaining.
Well, we execute a contract that is acceptable to this board.
I'd like to see the contract first before we allocate any funds toward it. To be, I mean, I think, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here.
Well, what the proposal is, is to prove the funding contingent on the subsequent approval of the contract. So if you don't subsequently approve the contract, then there's no obligation to carry forward with the funding.
Correct.
Is there any way to make this a little more time sensitive? Because you said, we did this last May, I think, and now here we are, January, and it's, the cost has gone up significantly. I wouldn't want this to drag out too much longer. Is there any way to get the city to come to the table and say, let's work this out?
We can ask, we can ask for a meeting, we can certainly do that, yes.
I think that would be wise.
Because they'd like to get it in place, if all of this can be approved.
Yeah, so what I can do is, if the city staff will agree and city legal, then we can bring the actual contract back to the board for approval at your next meeting.
Mr. Board. The amended motion, Mr. Sherry.
I did have a point. The existing contract, once the sound system's in place and you're able to sell advertising, how was that, the proceeds from that, did it all go to the school, or did it, depending on whose event it was, got the proceeds?
It said that if it was a school system-related event, the money goes to the school system.
Okay, what if it's a non-school-related event and the city is.
Like a Hammerheads game or something, then the city would decide where the revenue from the advertising goes.
Okay. It just, I mean, in my common sense, I'm thinking that the city's concerned that they're going to get stuck with a lot of maintenance on that, on that sound system. So we're all equally sharing or agreeing philosophically to put thirty-three thousand in there. If the city's going to get money from the sales that it wouldn't get otherwise by doing this, and the school's going to get money from it otherwise. I think if we shared in the, in the maintenance of the sign, all these arguments go away.
Who's maintaining the sound system now?
I'm sorry?
Who's maintaining the current?
Current owner, the city?
They do.
Okay.
City does. Of course, there's nothing to maintain, because it's basically.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the lights are out, and we, how much, how much we, we pay, how much rent annually? Like two hundred and, two hundred and forty thousand or something?
I can't remember off the top of my head. We have an interlocal agreement with the city that provides for a sharing of certain costs. I don't believe we pay them rent.
The county pays a portion on our behalf, and then we pay, they bill us for janitorial fees, so we do pay fees.
Which was, I think last year was about forty thousand.
Oh, I thought, I thought we paid a lot more than that.
The county does.
On our behalf, so it's still.
My understanding in talking to their director was that, you know, once the three entities put the money up, then they're responsible for the maintenance of the scoreboard and sound system, and that any event that takes place there, a school event, then it's our money, just like the Hammerheads, and that's not us, or anything else, we would not expect it. But if it's a school event, then yes, those will be our proceeds.
And if I'm wrong, there has to be at least fifty-one percent of the use has to be schools, as in the old agreement with that facility. So the schools are guaranteed a fair amount of money. I think you could share in the maintenance of that sound system and get it off the dime, get it done.
There's no requirement about that.
There used to be.
Well, there may, there used to be a lot of things associated with that.
But when Legion Stadium was owned by the county, and then the city, and then the county, and then back where it is, the original agreement was that fifty-one percent had to be used by the schools.
I don't think that's into any.
When my brother managed that facility out there, that was always a limitation that they had, unless that's changed in the last ten years.
Well, what changed it was the addition of the artificial turf, because before you were limited as to how many games, and they were very strict about that due to the condition of the field, but now with the artificial turf, it's basically unlimited. So it has greatly increased it, which is to the benefit of the school system.
But doesn't New Hanover High School have priority?
Right.
Yes.
In the scheduling?
Okay, so the amended motion, then what we want to do, Ms. Higgins, is to say that we'll do the third with a suitable contract concerning the maintenance and the funds, the sharing.
Subject to the approval of a suitable contract.
Okay, so then nothing is approved until we approve the contract, contingent upon that.
So you're, who is going to approve the contract? Are we going to approve?
No, it'll come back to us.
When it comes back to us next month?
Yeah.
So why don't we wait and look at the contract first, and then make that decision?
Well, because we have a motion to do it the other way. If that fails, then we might go back and not do it.
I would feel more comfortable if we had, we had a contract in writing that we could all agree upon, because there's a lot of discussion going back and forth about details that we haven't, we haven't written down yet. And since we don't have a contract, technically, we had hammered this out, no pun intended, over, back in May, that contract was not approved and therefore doesn't exist. I would prefer to have a written contract, something that we can discuss and approve before we allocate any funds toward that purpose. That's just my thought process.
Any other comments, questions? We'll vote now on the amended motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so now the motion is that we will proceed with the amended motion, which is now the main motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
It passes, and you'll bring that back to us, Mr. Board. Okay, under new business, item twelve, item A, Pause for People, appendix B, Dr. Markley.
You have a memorandum of agreement for, an agreement with an organization called Pause for People. And it is a wonderful organization. They are working currently with Pine Valley and Ms. Opgrain. But before you approve that memorandum, you probably should know a little bit about the company and what they're doing. And I'm going to ask Ms. Opgrain to take over from here. She's got some guests with her. We have some other guests with us as well that we'll introduce you to. So Ms. Opgrain?
And you'll introduce the folks that are with you.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Mark McCann from Pine Valley Elementary School. I'm a fifth grade teacher. I've got with me Kyrie Henry. She's the founder of the organization. I've also got my principal, Ms. Higgins, Opgrain. And Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Lance is here with me from UNCW as well today, so.
Could you speak more to the microphone?
This is true, this is true. If you guys would join me up front, that'd be great.
If you could, if you could speak more to the microphone.
Yes, sir, sorry about that. I don't know if you could tell or not that they were even here tonight, but I got to spend some time with the organization, and it's absolutely amazing what they do. Just a brief synopsis, they cover nature and nurture in their program. So they have their own breeding program that I'm going to have Kyrie talk to you a little bit about. They also then train those dogs who are genetically inclined to do the work that is required in school systems with PTSD sufferers and other ailments that can be alleviated with dog therapy. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Higgins.
Thank you for letting us be here tonight. I do have my story for the evening, but I'm going to cut it down to about a third. I know that you're busy, and y'all have a lot that you're working on tonight. I worked with dogs in a similar organization when I was at College Park some years ago. And we had a child who was profoundly LD in special ed. There was no program that we have out that we didn't trial with them, and we created our own materials. We did everything possible for this child, and numerous ones of us were helping teach him throughout the day, but he could not read, even sent a teacher to Durham to have extra training. When we became a partnership with the group with dogs for reading, and I believe, Julie, you had the same setup going at Alderman at the time, we assigned an English Bulldog named Bull to this little boy, and this big bulldog would come in and people would just get away. Bull went in, we had an area set up, we were collecting data on the child's progress, and had everything set up. His mother worked at the school. We hid behind the bookcases, and we wanted to see his first reading lesson with the dog. And it was absolutely amazing. He sat down, he put his hand over on the dog, and he read. And we were all behind the bookcase, just crying and trying not to let him know that we were there. It was like his brain, when he had the dog beside him, it was like his brain just assimilated all the reading strategies and all the knowledge that we had been pounding and working with him with for four years. When he would sit down with the dog, he would look at the dog, ask the dog comprehension questions, and then explain to the dog the comprehension questions that we had worked so hard to teach him to think about. So in a nutshell, it took away all the inhibitions of reading, it took away the stress, his reading just soared. And we could just say that Bull changed that child's life forever, because he became a reader when he had the dog with him. We've put in your packet lots of good information. There is one sheet where I have bulleted a lot of things about beginning, and Dr. Markley, it's beginning of school information, it's not the middle of school information, but the big number of children that we have who come in needing lots of help in reading. We run every day eleven leveled literacy groups a day with small groups, which would be four children. We have twelve being served in first grade in reading recovery. We have fifty in the Title One After School Program. We use that throughout the day. We have sixty-eight students with IAPs. We serve thirteen to twenty at any given time in our intensive behavior support. And Mr. McCann will tell you a little bit about, and it is in your brochure, about post-traumatic stress, about anxiety disorders, and all of those things that we feel like the dogs can help us with. We're hoping that this works, and we anticipate great outcomes from this partnership, because it's tied in with UNCW and our good friends there that we work so closely with. So thank you, and Mark, I'll turn the rest over to you, and I didn't cut it too short, but keep going.
Next on the list is Kyrie Henry.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kyrie. I'm the founder and current CEO of Pause for People. Pause for People was founded in nineteen ninety-nine. That's getting longer and longer in the past. At the time, I was twelve, and the help of my father, who's our current COO, we founded Pause for People at the time in Northern Virginia. We began animal assisted educational interventions in Loudoun County Public Schools in two thousand and two. Yes, it's hard life. And we completed over one million therapeutic contacts with the students in Loudoun County Public Schools and our certified assistance dogs during that time, over twelve years. That program ended last year as we had fully transitioned our headquarters to Wilmington. Didn't have the administration there to oversee that program anymore. So, so we have organizational precedent for this type of program. We also have precedent in the state of North Carolina for this type of program. We began having a full-time assistance dog in the Cabarrus County Schools several years ago, and that has grown to three full-time dogs assisting special education teacher and two physical therapists in Cabarrus County Schools. We also have a program here in Wilmington in conjunction with UNCW. I'm the instructor of four courses at UNCW in which the students in the undergraduate level are able to participate in a lot of community-based learning by helping us train our assistance dogs and place them with their recipients, namely, children with various disabilities and veterans with post-traumatic stress disorder. So in doing so, we've done some visits with our student trainers and their dogs at the schools that you see listed, Ashley, Williston, Ogden, and Holly Tree. Also with us is Meredith McComby, who's one of the parents of one of our clients, Erin, who's a student in New Hanover County Schools, and his big sister Abby is here too, but I don't think she's wanting to be too participatory. And you can see this in your packet, but I just wanted to demonstrate our training program for our dogs, the type of dogs that are visiting the schools, the type of dog that would be placed to work at Pine Valley. We oversee the dog's entire lifecycle from birth through placement. We have all these partnerships with other organizations that help us participate in community-based training where the training is also therapeutic. But I just wanted that to demonstrate that we're training these dogs, thousands of hours of training. We're a candidate of Assistance Dogs International, so our training process is accredited and overseen, and these dogs' whole lives are shaped for this job, so it's something that's very intricate and that we take very seriously. And so, I can just introduce Dr. Lance, just to tell you a little bit about our last going on five years of partnership with UNCW, and to the extent that that kind of speaks for our partnership, so.
Good evening. First of all, let me say that as the son of two teaching principals, I am grateful for your service to this community. I know that your role is often a thankless job, and I want to thank you personally, as I have the pulpit, so to speak, for all that you do for the citizens of New Hanover County. So thank you for that. Also, I've been told that I'm batting cleanup, which I have not done since Little League, and I assure you that my presentation will be shorter than most of my at-bats, and hopefully, a lot more successful in that regard. I articulated in a letter to you folks, it's in your packet as well, the nature of the relationship that UNCW has with both Pause for People and Pine Valley Elementary. I won't repeat those things. But I think it bears relevance to talk about how we got to those points, because those might be questions that you would want answered. When the Henrys approached us about having a partnership between University of North Carolina Wilmington and Pause for People, we solicited information from general counsel, from institutional risk management, from student affairs, residence living, and a number of other constituent groups on campus, and as you can imagine, when you get that many chiefs mixing into the pot, there are a lot of questions, questions about immunizations, questions about insurance, questions about risk management, and proper protocols for students who have severe allergies, proper protocols for students who have emotional responses of anxiety to animals. And through the next year, we worked diligently with particularly Kyrie, but also the members of the foundation to resolve all of those issues, to the satisfaction of everyone on our campus, to the point where we were able to implement a pilot program that has seen eighteen dogs on our campus. They have access to every facet of campus, with the exception of overnight stays within the residential living areas, but student recreation center, classrooms, labs, common areas in the Student Union Building, food courts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Through that partnership, that allowed us to develop the Assistance Dogs Program, which is the first and only of its kind in the nation that Kyrie referred to, that allows our students from all academic majors to progress through a four-course sequence that ultimately allows them to be public access trainers. So we have a very positive relation, that's not intended as a pun, we have a very positive relationship with Pause for People, and it's one that we intend to grow in a number of, variety of ways. We've also developed at that same time a rel- We've also developed at that same time a relationship with Pine Valley Elementary, in particular, the fifth grade, spearheaded by Mark McCann, but also Jen Rosser and Julie Novello. When we bring their students onto our campus, we're in their classrooms providing teachers in training. And quite frankly, I tell you that in my twenty years in the academy, I've never met a more solid group of fifth-grade educators in my life. They are amazing. So, what's being brought forward to you is really, I think, a tremendous idea by two really tremendous individuals with the support of a great principal. If I can implore you to support that, I think you'll get a great resource within Pine Valley Elementary that supports not only the academic, but the development of children, and also gives us at UNCW through our Assistance Dogs Program a really neat way to partner with both organizations simultaneously. So, I appreciate your attention to their request. Thanks.
The agreement has been reviewed by Wayne, our board attorney. He helped draft the agreement. It is an agreement that could be applied to not only Pine Valley, but other schools that wanted to work with this organization. I would ask the board if they have any questions, and also I would ask the board for a motion of support.
For approval, second.
Motion, second question?
Yes, and certainly we have a policy that defines service animals. It was established in 2012, so that's clear. But looking at the procedures, Mr. Bullard, for the use of service animals, some of the requirements in here are not necessary in the agreement, and while we have a wonderful situation here, and I'm certainly in favor of it, in thinking if we're going with other organizations eventually, we need to be a little bit more clear. So, I would suggest that we incorporate, it's not clear to me, as I was reading this, that first of all, the parent has to make the request with a special form. That form is not really clarified in here, it says a form, before any organization would offer to provide that service. So, I think we need to add a little bit more in here to clarify the procedures and the order of it. And also in the procedures, it said in some cases, you might want the family physician to, for documentation, and I think that's important, too, because we don't want to overstep our boundaries with some parents. So, we need to give them that kind of authority to request. So, there are just some things in the procedures that weren't really clarified in this agreement. And we also have in there people, people, two people, and we want to change that to a four rather than a two for the editing. But those are my thoughts about, if we could just go back and look at the procedures.
I'm not clear, could you talk about the doctor's note? What, I'm not sure what your...
That if this child needed certain services, that that would be from the doctor rather than the parent wishing to have these services.
You mean like if a child is assigned a service dog?
Yes.
There's documentation to approve that?
Yes.
Wouldn't that come through...
Or some from their 504 or their IEP.
I was gonna say, that would come through the IEP, I would think.
But all children may not have an IEP or a 504.
Right. Are you saying that anyone that comes in contact with a service dog in Pine Valley, you would want to see documentation for?
Well, I'd like to see a need, and the procedure doesn't say that all students have to, but it says in some cases. So, if I have a child who doesn't want to leave home, and I think that's going to help, there may be some other assistance that a child needs, so I think that we need to have more than just a desire for the service, but a true need.
Well, I guess I'm, my understanding is that the Service Dog Program, just like Canines for, Carolina Canines for Service, which I think they read at College Park, it's whatever a child chooses to read to them, it's not somebody that's assigned because of an IEP or a 504, it's just a choice. So, I'm assuming this is operating under the same auspices, correct? That the child, that the service dog would be available?
This is not a specific dog assigned to a specific student.
Okay.
In part, this is to help these folks put these dogs in contact with students as part of the training for the dog. So, it's not a case of if Wayne needed a service dog, that this is the method of getting that service dog. This is more about creating that, those training opportunities for this organization with our students to help train these dogs so they can eventually be assigned to a specific person.
What's the difference in this program and the reading program at Forest Hills Elementary? There's a, they read to a dog over there, is it similar to...
We intend, or we're requesting that our dog, when we get it, which will be next fall, would be in the care of Mr. McCann, and that it would be allowed to be there on a regular basis, whereas the other dogs in the other programs...
Just budget.
Are in and out, they're different people, different dogs, and they come and they go. But our dog would be with us all day, so it would become just a part of our school. I would like to say that with our school setup, every classroom is a separate entity. It's, you know, Pine Valley is open, every classroom opens to the outside, so we're not anticipating that we would have allergy or other issues, because you're not talking about a main hallway where if a dog was in a section of a building, everybody would be there. It would be, you know, he would go to a specific classroom, or a specific little room for tutoring groups, or wherever.
So, you would have the dog there every day, all day?
Right.
I like this, we could start with this, and we, middle schools, we can go with Dobermans and pit bulls.
As you can see, these are a little bit different.
We have such a large population with lots of needs, emotional needs, and we do have the intensive behavior support class, so we really liked the idea of the dog being there all the time, because, you know, he can just visit around some during the day, and that's soothing. You know, it's nothing like a dog or a baby to bring out the kindness in people.
But a service dog is a different level of training. It's an entirely different playing field than a reading dog.
Right.
It's, it's, it's the amount of time that it takes to train a service dog is, it's not, I mean, the Canines for Service dogs can be personal pets with, with some training.
Almost like personal assistants.
Right. But the service dog is, you think of it as like a wheelchair. It is, it is a certified assistance.
And that was what endeared Mr. McCann to your program to begin with, was the extensive breeding and training.
Right. And then also, if I may, the policies that apply to other service dogs, to give students access and the right to bring a service dog with them to school or anywhere else if it mitigates their disability, is a direct service dog, like Dr. Markley said, that's with, assigned to one person. We do that as well, but in this instance, we're talking about a facility dog, which is handled by someone that we train through our training program, in this case, example, Mr. McCann, through our extensive training program to meet all of our criteria and all of our insurance requirements, and then they utilize that dog to help mitigate disabilities and difficulties amongst a population of people. So, not only would the policies apply differently, as does legislation, so on and so forth, so Mr. McCann would go, will go through, over the summer, over four months of our training process to meet our organizational requirements, which would also make him far and above in training versus the handlers of dogs who come in for transient visits.
But does the dog stay with Mr. McCann?
Yes, sir.
Does he come to school with you, and then go home with you, and he's there all day?
He is...
Facility dog's probably a better term than service dog.
It is, it's a facility dog.
I like that better.
And he, Mr. McCann will have the dog transferred from us on a custody contract, as do all of our clients. We have over four hundred clients, some of them in a similar instance as with the three dogs I mentioned in Cabarrus County. The dog will reside with him, he will follow all of our policies and procedures as an organization, and then the dog's job would be to help him in Pine Valley with the students that they identify as having that need.
So, is this what you were doing in Cabarrus County?
Yes, sir.
Just exactly what you're proposing for Pine Valley?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How are you funded?
I'm sorry?
How are you funded?
We're funded privately. We're a 501(c)(3), and we're funded through corporate sponsors and private donations. And Mr. McCann, nor the rest of our clients, are charged for their dogs.
I know the difference they've made, but this program with the veterans with PTSD, I've seen some of those programs here locally, that have worked wonders.
Now, not, one of these is not the ones that are going with you?
No, they're just indicative of the same certification. Yes.
Dr. Holliday, since you were student, support services, do we know how many schools they're in? Do you keep track of? And I think it would be wonderful to find, from time to time, the benefits that are happening and some results so that we can follow the program.
We'll be happy to ask Mr. McCann to come back next year and talk about his experience.
That would be good.
Yes.
I don't know about whether, I assume a school dog would be different from the service dog, but on last night's news, there was a little girl who's in elementary school who has brittle bones disease and was not able to walk until she was given a Great Dane service dog. And she walked around with the Great Dane, like, and she was almost running down the halls. It was really touching.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second, correct? Any other questions, comments? Oh, there's a favorite point, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Approved. Thank you very much.
I do want to mention that, I didn't want to bring this up before the vote, but my daughter has volunteered with Pause For People since, I guess, almost a year now, and she has had an internship as well, and it's, I can, I can speak to the, to the quality of the organization, and I can also speak to how far that drive is, and if you think I have a hard time getting on time here, getting her out there has been a challenge, but it has been well worth it. They do so much for the dogs, and there's a, I mean, you can't imagine the training. And if anyone ever is interested in going out there, it's out in Hampstead, I can actually tell you where it is, exactly.
Did you find it?
I found it, and I know it's not, and it's not a New Hanover County, and I found it, but it took me a while.
Congratulations.
The folks remember, this dog will not be in place until the next school year.
Sixteen seventeen.
So, you can't go off this next semester and visit.
And I guess the pit bulls and all that type of question?
We only have Lash and Goldens.
Do we know which breed is going to Pine Valley?
We have a dog identified right now as a strong candidate that we're putting through some specialized training to see if she excels at, in particular, the elementary part.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All of their dogs are cute.
Okay, item, let's see, B, NCSBA Legislative Committee,附着J, my name there. I know sometime back, I think everyone saw my email over the holidays about appointing Mr. Shell and Mr. Higgins as our representatives. I know Dr. Markley sent an email out that...
I thought that was a good idea, to have the two of them Ed's service.
Well, right.
You know, he has the institutional longevity, and Bruce has more of the business sense.
Well, we used to have, years ago, has had a legislative liaison, that was an assignment to a board member.
I know.
Then we kind of did away with it, said, okay, each board member can kind of be responsible for that, but then, and that will continue. This was just after, I think it was one of our legislators said they weren't hearing from board members whether they'd like to, we said, okay, we will, I talked with Dr. Markley, I said, well, we'll appoint someone that will vary all of our comments, concerns, et cetera, to our local delegation and to anyone else, plus, board members themselves can continue to do that. But Mr. Shell and Mr. Higgins will do it well, kind of officially, but then also Ms. Adams sent out an email from the North Carolina School Boards Association that they're starting a group where...
It's been there, it's been there for years.
Oh, it has?
I was on it, I was on it one time before.
What, what they're doing now?
Yeah, yeah, they, we met a couple times a year to try to set the agenda...
Right.
For LeAnn to then...
Well, they've expanded...
It was Ed, and then it was Steve Bilze, and that's how he got to know four governors by first name.
Okay, well, okay, so...
Sorry, it just sticks in my mind.
What they want us to do is, what, there are eight districts in the state?
Yes.
And I don't know how many...
Nine.
Nine, that's what I was thinking, but they said there were eight presidents, I assumed there was one for each district.
And then there's the one for the charter schools that makes the ninth.
Well, I think we're in District, what, two?
Yes.
And I'm not sure how many counties are in our district, about six?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
That's what they said tonight when we were doing Teacher Valida. How many, how many counties in our district? You told us tonight whenever you were doing Teacher of the Year.
Thirteen.
I told you so.
Thirteen?
It helps when you listen to the presentation.
I was so impressed with the awards being given, that just, right over my head. Okay, thirteen districts in our, or thirteen systems in our district, or counties. So, each county, from my understanding, from what they want us to do, will nominate an individual, and then the School Boards Association will select one individual from the district. So, the individual that we select tonight might not necessarily be one of the people on the committee.
I recommend that, say, only want one person, that I've moved that we have Ed with his institutional memory so that he can, he can be the liaison to the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Okay, so I mean...
Second that.
Okay.
No offense.
No, target. I would definitely be out of the running because my history of there, my memory of that is, I don't even know how many are in our district. Okay, so Mr. Higgins has been nominated, because what they wanted us to do was nominate individuals, vote on them, and then send them the name. So, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Shell. You're not going to...
That's okay. Thank you, though.
I withdraw my nomination.
Oh, okay.
No, I think you said no.
You didn't want it?
No, I'm fine with it.
Any other nominations? Well, we have one nominated, and all those in favor, Mr. Higgins, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both.
Opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, for willing to serve and keep the legislature straight. Okay, item C, schematic design for College Park Elementary School replacement, dependent statements to Hans.
As you know, on June 2nd of this year, the board approved, as a replacement for College Park, a prototype design of Castle Hain Elementary School as designed by LS3P Associates. So, at this time, I'd like to call upon Mr. Charles Bonney and his team to come forward and present schematic design.
Thank you, Mr. Hans. I'm here to, just to introduce LeAnn Lawrence. She has been before you before, she has been leading a team to carry forward College Park Elementary School, very proud of that, College Park Elementary School. We're very proud of that design that we did at Park, at Port City, and, excuse me, at Porter's Neck, and we look forward to getting this one going very soon. I'll turn it over to LeAnn Lawrence.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to make this schematic design presentation for the new College Park Elementary School. Charles and I are here to answer any questions that you have as we're going through this presentation. It's relatively brief. As Mr. Hannah mentioned, it is, this school's based on the Castle Hain Elementary School prototype, so as we go through some of the images, they'll look familiar to you, because it wasn't that long ago that we were standing here presenting the Porter's Neck Elementary School project, and of course, that is also based on the Castle Hain Elementary School prototype.
Does it have the same roof?
There's no canopy.
We have, as you may recall, we modified the canopy.
Well, that's what I was asking.
So, we didn't revert back to the... So we, we didn't revert back to the old one.
Okay.
And I, let me just say, I'm totally opposed to it, because I like the fact that it was different, and I liked the blue, and I'm sticking to it, I think it's ridiculous that we have this same old beige school, maybe, so out of the box.
Well, I will, I will say, before we get to the image of the school, you'll see some beige, but it's just representational, we'll look at colors a little bit later on in the process, but let's get through this, this schematic design presentation and get a blessing from you all on the direction that we're going in so far, and of course, the, the project is being constructed on the existing school site, the existing school will be demolished, and the new school will be built on that site, the Castle Hayne Elementary School prototype lends itself well to this site, it's rather compact, as you see from the data that we have, just a little bit under fifteen and a half acres, we've got a two-story footprint of, with a total square footage of eighty, eighty thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet, and serving five hundred and ninety-five students.
And that's heated square feet?
Yes, ma'am. So, here's the site plan, and you see, if you were to look at this right now as an, with, in an aerial view, the existing college, or the existing College Park footprint is in the general area where the new footprint is shown, so we're re, we're placing the new footprint in the gen, in just about the same location where the existing footprint is, and there's good reason for that, that's the highest portion of the site, where you see the storm water down on the lower right-hand side of the site, so the lower part of the site, so we're going to respect the natural flow of storm water on the site, use the higher portion for the building footprint, and let the water naturally drain down to the lower end of the site. The footprint will look familiar, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, working with the, the prototype of Castle Hayne Elementary for Porter's Neck Elementary, when we came to you for that project, we mentioned the fact that we met with district personnel, and we took the Castle Hayne plan, and we improved it, we added small group space, we improved the efficiency of the plan, we added flexible use space, so we've gained a great benefit from that process with Porter's Neck, and we're carrying that over into the College Park design, so this footprint incorporates all the lessons learned from Porter's Neck, and will, will, will serve that community well, so in the, the footprint that you see, the first floor plan, toward the bottom of the screen is where the main entry is, off to the right, in kind of that yellow group of spaces, is the administration wing, classrooms off to the right, to the left of the administration are the, all the assembly spaces, cafeteria, the multipurpose space, the media center, and then the classroom wing that extends out vertically, that's the two-story portion of the, of the building, so when you go to the second floor plan, you see there, we have the two, the second story comprised of classroom space.
Have a question, on the first floor, the, I guess, the multipurpose room, is that designed for access to the public or from out, I mean, I notice there's, there's doors on the very front going outside, is that so that it's available for the public and being able to close off the rest of the school, or is that just a requirement for?
The, the way we've designed it is, it's specifically for the use of the public after hours, if the school and the campus so choose, and there were certain things that we had to take into account with the building code to make that happen, so yes, we've taken that, we have taken those factors into account in the design, we did the same for Porter's Neck, and we're doing the same here, so the intent is, is that it could be used after school hours.
So you can go from the outside to the multipurpose room without entering through the rest of the school?
Correct, you can go into the multipurpose room, we have to have access from the multipurpose room to toilets, for instance, that are on the interior, but yes, you can gain access directly from the exterior into the cafeteria, as well as the multipurpose room. And then the final slide is the, a conceptual rendering of the entry elevation, and again, looks very familiar, because it's also, we presented this as a part of that Porter's Neck Elementary School project, we will be working with the district on the selection of brick color and finish colors, as well as interior finish color, so it will have its own personality, but it will be in keeping with what you see in this image.
I like the beige.
It's a nice neutral, it's a classic.
It's like every other school.
The retention pond that you're putting in, will that, make that multipurpose field usable even dur, even when you've had recent rain, I know, that's always been a low-lying area for that school.
It is, and what we're doing is, and we're working, you know, this is at schematic level, so we've got some additional work to do on some of the calculations from the civil standpoint, but yes, that's the, that is the absolute goal, is that we're making that retention pond that low point, and then it allows the rest of that site to drain to that area, and may, and, you know, right now, when it rains, that whole area is, has water ponding on it, so we're taking that into account as we work at, through the civil design.
So, are you going?
And then the front, you would also, you probably have some significant fill to get a hundred and twenty-one spaces?
Not necessarily significant, but we do have some that we will need to introduce, but we're looking at the opportunity to gain some fill from the stormwater pond and reallocate that on the site, so it's not necessarily just bringing in fill a hundred percent, but we can salvage and kind of steal and borrow.
That's what I was going to ask, what you just said.
We tried, we tried to work with them on a site that utilized the current elevation issues at the school, with that, with half the land being at a high point, and then that lower piece, we didn't want to, as much as possible mitigate us doing additional work. I think they did a great job for that.
Thank you, any additional questions?
Are there possibilities, I know Ms. East had mentioned it, other items, Mr. Higgins likes this, I don't know color, is that beige, I guess?
Got it.
Is there a blue or something like that, could that, is that a possibility?
Absolutely, what's represented with the beige that you see in this image is a metal panel system, and there are a number of colors that are available, and, you know, we'll work with Mr. Anderson and the Facilities Department, as well as the principal of the school, and the determination of colors and what's appropriate for that location, as well as taking into account, you know, the school, it's an established school, so we have, not that we're going to make the school match the mascot colors, but those are thought, you know, the, the existing mascot and, and, and the, what they want to represent in that school.
Why don't, why don't we just allow the, the school itself to determine the color?
Take a vote, the current school, I mean, I would just love to see it.
It would depend on what they suggest, though.
Well, we can give them boundaries, but I would just love to see the school take some of the personality of the, the students, and, and of the surroundings, I, I, you know, driving by, it's, it's, I mean, no disrespect to the, to the design, it looks like, you know, a very solid school, I like the plan, but, and when you drive by, I'd love to know that that's College Park, I'd love that, for everyone to be excited and proud of the fact that that school is in their neighborhood, and in, you know, in some cases, almost their backyard, and I would love for the students to be a part of it, to be a part of that process, so if we can give them any kind of input along with administration, I would love to do that.
Yeah, because they're more willing to take a little ownership of the, of the facility itself, and, and.
Well, they probably have some cool ideas, you know, they're the ones in, in there every day, so.
They may come up with a color we had, had not considered.
I'd like to see it first, though, before.
Oh, yes. Well, I think, I think we should have final approval, I mean, we don't want neon pink, but, you know.
But it could be a school project.
It could be, it could be something that the school could, could determine, and, you know, we could, like, Ms. East up, so, we could give them some boundaries, but I'd like to have their input, to be honest with you, it's, to me, it's a minor.
At our last district meeting, which I, I do remember where it was held, I don't remember how many counties were there, but I do remember that one of the breakout sessions put on by the School Boards Association, remember that?
Yes, that, that was, that resonated with me, yes.
It was Dixon Middle School, I think, a new school up at Dixon Middle School, and they brought the students in, and they allowed them to really participate in quite a few decisions concerning the school, and they did a good job.
Well, they used the software, they used the actual software that the architect used, and then they presented it to the architectural firm, and they incorporated some of their ideas, which are very cool, like, you know, a sliding, almost like a garage door for the library, so you could, you could pull it down when you needed quiet in the library, and then you could pull it up, and all that space, and this was a high school, I think, it may have been a middle school, could be incorporated in that entire area if you were doing some sort of assembly or whatever, so they had some very, I thought, innovative ideas, and ideas for incorporating the grounds as well.
May I say something about the previous slide? It might just be me, but I can't tell the difference between the lavender and the light blue, I was unable to determine what was support and what was, I think, classroom space, right there. I, I just can't tell, I, I don't know if it's my eyes, is there anybody else?
Yeah, I think, I think that's gray.
I was thinking a mint green, maybe a mint green would be different from the.
It looks to me like, like a blue, a beige, and a gray.
That, that's, those are the basic color schemes, towards the bottom of the screen, on that plan, there's a larger area that's colored in gray, and it represents the, and I know the resolution on the screen is, is.
Maybe that's what it is, but I can't tell the difference between.
You can on your.
On the computer screen.
On your screen, it's really clear.
It's better on the computer.
It's, it's a bit washed out when it's projected.
It's very defined on the screen.
There is a mechanical space on the, if you're looking at this vertical line of these, of this floor.
Oh, yeah, it is much more pronounced, okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine, the gray represents mechanical space, it's kind of a core, and it's a nice location, because it's central, kind of at the, the, the cross axis of these two elements of the building horizontally and vertically.
You don't have to explain, now that I saw it on the screen, I'm sorry I troubled you.
No, no problem, and I, I love the comments about the student involvement, and we would like nothing better than that, so as we move forward, that's something we'd like to talk with Mr. Anderson about, I had the privilege, in my involvement with a, a group of leadership Wilmington, I was able to go to College Park Elementary, Elementary and meet with Ms. Green, the principal, and I've never been more impressed with the principal than Ms. Green, and the way she serves those students was phenomenal, and I can't think of a group of students that I'd love to see more involved in those, those kids.
Yeah, I think she'd be all over this, you know, I think this would be a really neat thing for her to take to her students and say, hey, we have this opportunity, and I appreciate y'all being willing to, to entertain that idea.
Right.
We would love it, it would be, it would be a great fun.
And I think it, I think it could be very educational, because there is a science to, to color, in terms of the mood it evokes, and, you know, what, what kind of tone do they want to set from the time you walk in the building, so I think, I think it can be a very educational process for them, and she will definitely make it relevant to, to, you know, to what it is they're learning, and.
It's a very tangible thing, because eventually, this is going to be standing on that site, and to be able to come and see the result of all the hard work, would, it would be, it really bring it home.
I think it would be good for the girls to see a woman in this field, too, I know you're not that unusual, but many of our young girls have, kind of have blinders on as to what their abilities could possibly be.
Don't get me on my soapbox, because that, I could, I could take up the rest of the evening by applauding your comment, because absolutely, there's nothing, whether it's a boy or a girl, we always want to inspire students to dream big, and Ms. Green had asked, asked me if I could come back in March and do a Career Day presentation.
Good.
And we're going to be, I'm going to be doing that, and we're going to bring the drawings, we'll bring the computer model, and anything that can just spark creativity in a child is something that we love to be engaged with the students, and we look forward to that.
And ownership, this gives them ownership of their school, this, I mean, twenty years from now, they could drive by and they can say, hey, I helped pick out the siding for that school, or, you know, I helped redesign this, or picked out the paint colors, or whatever, so I think that's a really neat thing.
Have they thought about what's existing there at College Park that they would like to have preserved for the new school, just as we did with Snipes, the ticket booth that was there for the auditorium?
We're talking with the, the principal there, and, and exploring some of those options, one of the things that you have at College Park right now is a real connection with the outdoors, because you're going from building to building to building, and you're outside, they have an outdoor classroom right when you walk up, so we're looking at ways to, to introduce those elements onto the site, and maintain that connection that they have with the, with nature and the outdoors.
That's good.
Any other comments, questions?
Exciting.
Okay, we had a motion and a second, correct?
Will we make it look like Hogwarts? Just kidding.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved, thank you. Item D, bids for Eaton Elementary School carpet replacement, dependence case, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, requested the board approve the bids for Eaton Elementary School carpet replacement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
I'm wondering if we can let the students at Eaton Elementary pick out the carpet for the replacement.
It's been replaced with tile.
I'm, I'm kidding.
All, any other comments, or, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item E, bids for Cottington Elementary School carpet replacement, dependence in, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, requested the board approve the replacement of the carpet with tile at Cottington Elementary.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item F, 2014 bond update and budget amendments, dependence in, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you recall, in December, on December 2nd, 2014, the board approved the final, final implementation schedule for the 2014 bond, for all the, all of the projects, the school system also maintains a roof management program, and as part of that program, approximately twenty percent of our roofs are evaluated each year with a, with an assessment of their, of their potential for replacement and repair that is needed, this evaluation is, is preventative in nature, and we also utilize this to put together part of the bond program, the last evaluation was in 2013 prior to the bond issue, and that's what the roof replacement schedule and the roof priorities were established out of the 2013 evaluation of our roofs for the 2014 bond. Since that time, preventive maintenance and repair efforts have changed some of our roof replacement priorities, which has resulted in a savings, and what we are recommending is that the savings from those changing roof priorities be allocated to expand the scope of other projects included in the 2014 bond program. If you'll look on your second page, you will see a breakdown of how we would like to see the savings allocated, you have approximately one point four million dollars in savings, and we would like to see that allocated for Brogdon Hall, air conditioning, Hogard, and Laney Furniture and Equipment, at about eighty-eight thousand each. You also have in there a listing of the original roofing priorities, what they originally were, and changes to those, and as you'll see, we didn't just remove some of the roofs, we removed some, but we also added some, but the net dollar amount is from savings on the roofs.
Mr. Hance?
Some of these, we've, we have already done preventive maintenance, and we've already done some repair work on of these in the interim period of time, so that we have extended the life of those roofs, it's not that they're, we're just not doing them, and they're still in the same situation that they were, they're, they're not, so we've extended the repair time out to about 2021, 2023, in some cases, for some of those roofs, based on the preventive maintenance that's already been done, and some of the repair work that's already been done, for those roofs that were identified originally in the 2013 evaluation, which applied to the roof priorities for the bond.
That's what I was going to ask you, Mr. Hance, how, how long does a roof coating extend the life of, of a, of a roof, is that the, the purpose of it, or is?
Yeah, that's, that was the purpose of it, to extend the life of the roof, and that's why, that's why we did it, and you'll see some of the estimates there in, on the sheet, which extends it out to 2021, 2022, 2023, and we go back and we look at that, we don't leave it in isolation, we go back and we evaluate that, because sometimes we do have accelerated deterioration of some of our roofs based on the environment that we live in, that's why some of the priorities have changed as well, some have, have deteriorated at a faster rate than what we initially thought they would during our roof investigations, and some have not, so that is one of the reasons that we can reprioritize, and this is, you know, it does give us the flexibility to, to do that. So that is one of the reasons that we can reprioritize, and this is, you know, it does give us the flexibility to, to do that, because we're reprioritizing within the bond. So that is one of the things that we, we are recommending, that we reprioritize and that you approve the, uh, reprioritization of the roofs, uh, within the bond, within the bond program, and that you allocate the funds, and that you consider the budget amendment, which will appear later at the end of the, uh, end of the-
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Yes, uh, Bill, and I see the one point two million going to Brogdon. Uh, how much more will be needed for Brogdon Hall, or is that a separate, uh, item we're talking about?
We already have identified an additional five hundred thousand, which is in the capital to, that will go toward Brogdon. So yes, there will be more money than, it'll be about a one point seven million dollar job, and that's what will all, will go to Brogdon. But five hundred thousand is already allocated in earmark for Brogdon Hall Air Condition.
So this completes the funding for that project?
That's correct. This completes.
Any questions? Thank you. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved, thank you. Item G, design phase change order for John T. Hogard High School additions and renovations projects. Appendix, O, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the design phase change order for, uh, Hogard. What this is doing is adding, excuse me, adding, uh, the roofing, roofing work for Brogdon, I mean, excuse me, for, uh, Hogard High School. This was originally in, um, the, uh, infrastructure work within the two thousand fourteen bond. What we're doing is just bringing it forward and letting the designer, uh, rather than hiring another designer to do it on, uh, Hogard High School, we're just putting it into the current designer who's going to do the renovations at Hogar- at Hogard, and we're increasing the scope of work for him, and therefore, we're adding thirty-nine thousand to the design fee in order to, um, accommodate the increase in the scope of work, which we're adding to his contract.
It actually doesn't increase overall costs, it's just-
No, it doesn't.
Putting it in one place instead of two.
You're right. Putting one place there, two, it's actually much more efficient to do this.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, the next three I would suggest the board probably take those as a group, since it's really the same item, uh-
Move for approval for H, I, and J.
Second.
What this is, this is the contracts that transfers these to the county so that we can recoup the sales tax.
Mr. Hans, anything you want to add to that?
Nope, that's it.
Any questions on that? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item K, easement agreement for Porter's Neck Elementary School. Appendix, S, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Re- recommend the board approve the Duke Power easement, uh, Duke Energy Progress, excuse me, energy, uh, I mean, easement agreement for, uh, Porter's Neck Elementary, so that we can put electricity at the school.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item L, right-of-way encroachment agreement for roadway improvements at Sidbury Road Complex. Appendix, T, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Re- I request that the board approve the right-of-way encroachment agreement, uh, for, uh, it's, uh, on Dairy Farm Road. It's for the Sidbury Road Complex. It's actually on Dairy Farm Road, and this is, uh, an agreement with DOT.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item L, three-party right-of-way encroachment agreement for utility improvements at Sidbury Road Complex. Appendix, T, Mr. Hans. T one, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a separate right-of-way encroachment agreement, and it is a three-party agreement with DOT, uh, Cape Fear Public Utility Authority and the school system, because there are some utility lines and water lines buried within the right-of-way, and so this is a, a three-party agreement, uh, for, um, easement and, uh, or encroachment agreement, and request that the board approve this, and it is for, uh, the Sidbury Road Complex, and once again, it is on Dairy Farm Road.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions?
Mr. Hans, just out of curiosity, how long did it take to put this deal together?
It took Mr. Anderson those quite a while. But we finally have it together, and we can move forward, and there'll probably be another one coming for the actual Sidbury Road, the front of the school on Sidbury Road. There was a meeting today, uh, in which, um, uh, we may have to go back and forth with DOT a little bit more. We thought we had it worked out for that particular, uh, encroachment agreement and road widening, and, uh, they are wanting to make a few changes, or recommending that we make a few changes. So we'll be back and forth with them on that, I'm certain, on Sidbury Road, and we'll be coming back to you for yet another one.
Any other questions? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item N, carpet cleaning and water extraction service contract amendment. Appendix, U, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, request that the board approve the, um, carpet cleaning, um-
Move for approval.
Second. Questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Hans. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought you were finished. You must have taken a breath.
That's, that's fine. That, that's, I don't need to say another word. I'm, I'm fine.
All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item O, Cape Fear Community College Marine Science Academy MOU. Appendix, D, Dr. Smith.
Yes, Cape Fear Community College works with, um, our folks at Ashley High School to enrich the experiences of our Marine Science Academy students, and this is the MOU that outlines that relationship and would ask for your approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
I'd, I'd like to say I'm happy we are finally working with Cape Fear Community College and their marine science program, because, uh, quite frankly, I think it probably offers our students much more than they could get, uh, even from maybe UNCW, because, I mean, Cape Fear now has the Hatteras and, uh, the, in fact, they have a working research vessel, uh, makes it very attractive.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
Now, I just asked Dr. Mark, we, we still have a, a MOU in, in place with UNCW as well. This is in addition to, um, just FYI.
Will this increase, um, the number of students that can, um, be in the program, or it just offers them additional options?
Well, this is a continuation, as you know, the leadership change with Cape Fear Community College, that just updates our MOU with them. Um, we are working to, um, make revisions in the enrollment process and make it more attractive to students, and, uh, also, we have requested of all of our signature programs to bring to the board a presentation during the work session in March. Um, I believe March fifteenth is when that's scheduled. So you will get an update and, and hear about, um, those changes as well.
We had them in place now, some of them for a year or longer, so we felt it was, bring it back to you folks, so you can see where those programs are.
Any other comments?
I would ask that we go back to the budget amendments now, which we moved to the end.
Well, we didn't vote on that. To the MOU for, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hans, it, it seems to me there, that there's the memorandum of understanding and also the agreement articulation of credit. Did we vote, did we vote for both of those? I didn't think so. We got two separate agreements in there. Did I misunderstand?
Well, I, I apologize. The, the, the second portion of that, it should just be the MOU. That, that's what we were bringing tonight, just the MOU. The articulation of credit, um, is still in place.
Well, you had signatures on, for both. That's why I thought you were looking for approval.
Well, no, you are correct. It, it is both. Um, so I do apologize for that. It is our articulation of credit, um, as well as the MOU, so yes.
So would you like that to be approved, guys, as well?
Yes, please, thank you.
So move.
Another motion then to-
Second.
Questions? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Now, back to-
I'd ask we return to consensus, item B, budget amendments.
Harry Hazel, would you mind explaining this budget amendment a little more than what's in the write-up, please?
For each of them, or specifically for capital, um, the, we have several different funds that we are amending, um, tonight for state due to changes in state allocations, the most significant one being a reduction in transportation. We always estimate our transportation funding, but they don't finalize it until December, until we know our efficiency rating, and even though we've done great with that, because we, hard to explain this, but because we saved so much last year, um, the percent stayed the same, so the funding went down. Um, so they fund about ninety percent of the cost, and if, since we, we saved a significant amount in the past year, this is the first year, it sort of went the other way for us, and so we lost funding. So we still expect to stay, you know, within budget, but it's a little tricky. For the other, um, changes with state and general fund, the most significant ones are just as we're rearranging, as we do every year, between positions between state and local for EC to maximize savings. Um, for other restricted funds, just some, um, budget for some grants that we've received, and then for capital outlay, the most significant portion is the revised, um, bond plan that was just discussed with you by Mr. Hans.
So is the, um, Brogdon Hall budget amendment built into this?
Yes, sir, it is. Everything that was shown in, um, the attachment to, um, what, what Mr. Hans presented is also included in the capital outlay budget amendment.
It was on the second page of the, uh-
If you, if you, if you look on the very last portion for the capital outlay fund where I provide it by project, you can see individually by project, which projects are going, increasing and decreasing, and, um, that is, I think it's way down at the bottom, Dawn, um, that is where the, um, those numbers match what Mr. Hans presented. Keep going. There you go. And then further down, the, the bond is at the very bottom of that next page. You start seeing the changes right through there. You see the increase to New Hanover, and then the decreases.
I got it, I'm glad you took it in there.
Any other questions?
No, you need to, any motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Any further questions? All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? True. One final question, Mr. Hans. I just happened to think about it, the, uh, how's it coming as far as cameras on the buses? Because I guess that's in the process of the purchased and installed and so forth?
That, that's correct, sir. We're just still in process of doing that.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda. Our call to the audience on non-agenda items. We've had two individuals sign up. First speaker is, uh, Atiba Johnson.
Something for the board?
Huh?
You have something for the board? Yes, sir. Appreciate that. Good evening, I'll be brief. My name is Atiba Johnson. I'm the founder- We're not going where's. Okay, I'm, I'm getting tired there, you're getting tired, so you know what I'm trying to speed this through for you. My name is Atiba Johnson. I'm the founder and executive director of the Oops Foundation. We're a local five oh one C three nonprofit. Oops stands for Offering Optimistic Plans for Success. We've been in the community now. I've been working in this field for about fifteen, seventeen years. I founded Oops two years ago. Uh, we work with, already collectively with the school systems, the graduation coaches, the dropout prevention coaches, the principals, everyone. We get referrals from the school system as well, probation and parole, the police department, sheriff's department, gang task force. We work with you guys very adamantly. We were just at the schools yesterday with the grief counselors, um, assisting them in all aspects. Last year, we graduated, uh, right at almost thirty individuals from our program through the school system, through New Hanover County Schools. Out of those thirty individuals, twenty-seven of them are going off to college and/or working. We did have, uh, one individual that fell back on hard times, I like to say. Um, the other two are making their way through Cape Fear. Uh, we do have partner organizations, UNCW and Cape Fear Community College. But we're honored to show you guys today, what you're looking at is our Oops Foundation drop-in, not dropout program. Uh, we work with the National High School Online. They're a national accredited organization, which allows your dropouts in New Hanover County Schools to actually come to our facility, um, get their high school diploma online. Um, so part of my proposal that you see in front of you now is that once they complete their graduation, that they're allowed as an incentive to walk with their home school. Um, so what that means is, and that, again, it's an incentive once they graduate, so if they drop out from Hogard or Ashley or Hanover, wherever, once they complete and they actually graduate, that they're allowed to walk with their home school. So that's just one proposal, you know, one proposal, a piece of it, that we have in there. Um, I think it would be great, the dropout rate, uh, the, the state law just changed, and we are definitely assisting you guys as much as we can. In order to enroll in National High School with us, you have to at least need or require six credits. We cover that cost right now collectively ourselves. So all the individuals that enrolled that have currently dropped out from Hanover County Schools this year that are taking it, we're covering that cost right now. Um, so we actually are looking to expand. We want to increase to about, we want to get about twenty-six, twenty-seven more kids, um, so we're definitely gonna be asking for your assistance soon, as you can see in the proposal. Uh, what that does is, I'm not sure if you understand, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for someone to be incarcerated. Thirty-eight thousand dollars. Thirty individuals times thirty-eight is one million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're looking at a small investment of maybe five thousand dollars per student from the school board. Thank you for your time. Good night, God bless. My contact information is in the pack.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for waiting through the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Next speaker, Ruth Howard Chambers. Next item on the agenda is any, uh, correspondence, any board members that'd like to share?
Next item is, uh, item fifteen, closed session. Mr. Bullard, will you stay, pursue it to North Carolina General Statutes?
It's gonna be chapter one forty-three, section three eighteen, point eleven A, subsections three and six, for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
I move for, that we go into closed session for the reasons given by our attorney.
Second.
Second.
All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're already closed session.